All right. Okay, we're going to call community of the whole to order. Welcome back, everyone. First, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the December 16th meeting without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Okay. So, the other thing on our docket tonight is Resolution 202471 to appoint a member of council for the vacant at-large seat. And we're going to be going through three applicants tonight. We have about 30 minutes scheduled for each one. And as I was explaining to them, when you come up, you're welcome to either stand or sit. And you'll have your two-minute opening statement if you so choose. And then council members will take turns asking you some questions. And we'll try to make it as comfortable as possible, even though it's somewhat of a formal setting, but necessary to be a public forum. So, all right. So, first up, we have Alexandra. And do you prefer Alexandra or Alex?
Alexandra.
Okay, great. Yep. We'll let you get settled there. I should turn red.
All right. There we go.
All right, Alex. So, whenever you're ready, did you have an opening statement you wanted to give us?
Let's just dive into the questions.
Okay, great. Okay. So, as you know, the council member-at-large position is vacant right now. It's a one-year term. If you were the successful candidate and you wanted to continue in that term, you would then need to run again in November. The at-large position, so council members on average estimate they work about 20 hours per week. Mondays nights generally starting as early as 5:30, going until whenever. And that doesn't include political events or other events in the community. So, knowing all that, is that feasible with your schedule?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And then, one of the other things that I would start with is, can you tell us a little bit about your engagement in the community, the way you volunteer, or are involved in, whether that's on the city level, or other nonprofits, or community organizations?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think, thank you, Madam President, for the question. I'll start by giving you just a little bit of background about myself. Born and raised in Lakewood, my parents still live in Ward 1, so thank you, Vice President Baker. They still live in Ward 1. My husband and I recently purchased a house in Lakewood, also in Ward 1. We got married in Lakewood at Georgetown-Vosh last May, so beautiful wedding venue. Would highly recommend that if anyone's looking for a wedding venue out there. But if we backtrack just a little bit, I am a proud graduate of both Lincoln Elementary School, horsed me in middle school when it still was a middle school, the first graduating class of Harding Middle School, and then I proudly graduated from Lakewood High School. After that, I went to the University of Cincinnati, studied organizational leadership. And the University of Cincinnati is like 45,000 undergrads. So, in my organizational leadership course studies, I spent a lot of time in student government. So, I was vice president and president of the Arts and Sciences Tribunal. So, that is our student government for the largest college on campus. I also spent time on the Student Safety Board, so I was able to interact with the Cincinnati Police Department. I was able to interact with the University of Cincinnati Safety Forces. And then I was also able to facilitate connections with students to make sure that they felt safe on campus. So, I got really involved in the University of Cincinnati. Once I graduated, I came back to Lakewood. I worked full-time, really cutting my teeth in human resources, which I think gave me a great background in understanding interpersonal conflicts, in problem-solving. And I worked in manufacturing, so I got a lot of experience in lean management, which I think could be applied in many organizations all over, both city, state, and federally. At this point in my life, my husband and I are married, we purchased a house, we've done a lot of the big home renovation projects, and we've really had an opportunity to kind of take stock of our life and how fortunate that we are. And I can't think of a better place to give back than to the community that made me the person that I am today.
Thank you. Do you want to, that was a great, good background. Were you able to tell us a little bit about, are you involved in any Lakewood organizations?
Yeah, yeah. So, currently, I am not. I am on the Supervisory Committee for the Century Federal Credit Union. So, credit unions, alternative to banking, really community-based and focused. They are in the process of expansion, and they may end up in Lakewood one day. But at this point in my life, I'm ready to really get involved in Lakewood. So, if I'm not selected for this role, I would absolutely love to take part and really be of service to Lakewood community, however you all see fit, or however the community would like to take advantage of my unique skill set.
Thank you. Vice President Baker?
Sure. Love all the Ward 1. That's great. You even got married in Ward 1.
Yeah, we did.
So, thank you, Alexandra. Really appreciate your willingness to put yourself out there. And I love Lakewood graduates, and I think there's like four of the eight, or four of the six, I think, are Lakewood grads. So, that's great to see.
Yeah.
Could use some fellows up here. But I appreciate you putting yourself out there. The one question I always like to ask, because it's interesting to get your kind of pulse, you know, as a person who grew up in Lakewood, and then also as a person who decided to move here and, you know, get married and start your life here, you'll have 11 months or 12 months in this role before you have to stand for reelection. So, taking the city as a whole, what do you think kind of the biggest challenge that we're going to face over the next 12 months? And how do you, how do you think you can start to tackle it in 12 months? Because it's a quick timeline.
Yeah, great question. 12 months is a really quick timeline, especially in large corporation or government. We don't necessarily move the fastest. But I think something that is, I think, top of people's minds right now is, there was the horrific accident at the Hilliard Triangle. And I think that is something that, you know, we've heard public comment on. That's something that people are really invested in right now, especially with the talk of closing of schools, and our vulnerable populations walking to and from school, and using active transportation to and from school. I know there is the Safe Streets for Lakewood plan in place. I would do everything in my power to try to find creative ways to fundraise, find funds, to make sure that it is safe for all members of the community, but especially those vulnerable members, being seniors and students, to be able to get to and from school in a safe manner, especially with the Lakewood Hospital project coming underway. I think the active transportation will become more and more important, because Lakewood prides itself on being a very walkable community. And I think that it is, but we need to enforce that and encourage that, and make sure that people feel safe when they're out and about walking.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bullock, are you ready, or shall I?
How about I'll go later?
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks.
All right. Councilmember Strebig.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alexandra. I did have a chance to look at your resume, and it's very impressive. I'm wondering what your experience with inclusion and diversity is, and how do you think your experiences will benefit Lakewood citizens and the city council?
Absolutely. So, working in human resources, I was a one-woman show in a manufacturing world. I was both the youngest, and oftentimes the only female in the room. I think that led to, one, my confidence in my leadership, but, two, being able to really draw inclusive opinions. I've had the opportunity to help several members of organizations be able to come out as either trans or gay in manufacturing workspaces, which I think can be really, really challenging when you're in a male-dominated workspace, and you may be transitioning to female. That could be really challenging. So, coming up with safe ways for that person to smartly and on their own timeframe come out to be the person that they truly feel that they are, I think, is incredibly important. And I think that can be used in my background with diversity, in including voices, both in the city and at city council.
Thank you. That's awesome. And thank you for helping the LGBTQ community thrive there. And can you tell me, what did your company do to help with that process? Did you have any educational opportunities with their employees, or I'm putting words in your mouth?
Yeah, no, no, that's a.
Tell me what your company did to help with that.
That's a great question. So, in small to medium-sized businesses, resources are oftentimes not as readily available as you would like for them to be. So, I took it upon myself to really seek out, like, helpful, like YouTube videos, so, like, really free resources that I was able to find independently. I had town halls amongst the company to roll out, what does it mean to be trans? What is this person feeling? And that was before, that was a part of our rollout plan, before we even had that person come out to anyone. So, it wasn't like a target on this person's head, and they're looking at, oh, well, this person is now trans. It was really just a way to help get the message out. And a part of change management is telling people about the change before it happens, so they can really buy into the change first. So, it was basically a one-woman show, trying to figure out what resources would really resound with the most amount of people.
That's good. And I love what you just said, that to tell people about change before it happens. And because we have so much change going on constantly, the education piece is critical. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Marks?
Thanks, Alex, for coming tonight and for having the courage to apply for an appointment to city council. It is very exciting to be a part of local government where you can really make change. So, since you've been a lifetime resident of the city of Lakewood, I'm sure you can sing its praise. What do you think is the greatest weakness in Lakewood right now?
I think right now, probably the greatest
Is that feasible with your schedule?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And then, one of the other things that I would start with is can you tell us a little bit about your engagement in the community, the way you volunteer or are involved in whether that's on the city level or other nonprofits or community organizations?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think, thank you, Madam President, for the question. I'll start by giving you just a little bit of background about myself. Born and raised in Lakewood, my parents still live in Ward 1, so thank you, Vice President Baker. They still live in Ward 1. My husband and I recently purchased a house in Lakewood, also in Ward 1. We got married in Lakewood at Georgetown-Vosch last May, so beautiful wedding venue, would highly recommend that if anyone's looking for a wedding venue out there. But if we backtrack just a little bit, I am a proud graduate of both Lincoln Elementary School, horsed me in middle school when it still was a middle school, the first graduating class of Harding Middle School, and then I proudly graduated from Lakewood High School. After that, I went to the University of Cincinnati, studied organizational leadership. And the University of Cincinnati is like 45,000 undergrads. So in my organizational leadership course studies, I spent a lot of time in student government. So I was vice president and president of the Arts and Sciences Tribunal, so that is our student government for the largest college on campus. I also spent time on the Student Safety Board, so I was able to interact with the Cincinnati Police Department, I was able to interact with the University of Cincinnati Safety Forces, and then I was also able to facilitate connections with students to make sure that they felt safe on campus. So I got really involved in the University of Cincinnati. Once I graduated, I came back to Lakewood. I worked full-time, really cutting my teeth in human resources, which I think gave me a great background in understanding interpersonal conflicts, in problem-solving, and I worked in manufacturing, so I got a lot of experience in lean management, which I think could be applied in many organizations all over, both city, state, and federally. At this point in my life, my husband and I are married, we purchased a house, we've done a lot of the big home renovation projects, and we've really had an opportunity to kind of take stock of our life and how fortunate that we are, and I can't think of a better place to give back than to the community that made me the person that I am today.
Thank you. Do you want to, that was a great, good background. Were you able to tell us a little bit about, are you involved in any Lakewood organizations or community service?
Yeah, yeah. Currently, I am not. I am on the Supervisory Committee for the Century Federal Credit Union, so credit unions, alternative to banking, really community-based and focused. They are in the process of expansion, and they may end up in Lakewood one day, but at this point in my life, I'm ready to really get involved in Lakewood. So if I'm not selected for this role, I would absolutely love to take part and really be of service to Lakewood community however you all see fit, or however the community would like to take advantage of my unique skill set.
Thank you. Vice President Baker? Do you want to?
Sure, love all the Ward 1. That's great. You even got married in Ward 1.
Yeah, we did, we did.
So thank you, Alexandra. Really appreciate your willingness to put yourself out there, and I love Lakewood graduates, and I think there's like four of the eight, or four of the six, I think, are Lakewood grads, so that's great to see. Could use some fellows up here. But I appreciate you putting yourself out there. The one question I always like to ask, because it's interesting to get your kind of pulse, you know, as a person who grew up in Lakewood, and then also as a person who decided to move here and, you know, get married and start your life here, you'll have 11 months or 12 months in this role before you have to stand for reelection. So taking the city as a whole, what do you think kind of the biggest challenge that we're going to face over the next 12 months? And how do you, how do you think you can start to tackle it in 12 months? Because it's a quick timeline.
Yeah, great question. 12 months is a really quick timeline, especially in a large corporation or a government. We don't necessarily move the fastest, but I think something that is, I think, top of people's minds right now is there was the horrific accident at the Hilliard Triangle, and I think that is something that, you know, we've heard public comment on. That's something that people are really invested in right now, especially with the talk of closing of schools and our vulnerable populations walking to and from school and using active transportation to and from school. I know there is the Safe Streets for Lakewood Plan in place. I would do everything in my power to try to find creative ways to fundraise, find funds to make sure that it is safe for all members of the community, but especially those vulnerable members, being seniors and students, to be able to get to and from school in a safe manner, especially with the Lakewood Hospital Project coming underway. I think the active transportation will become more and more important because Lakewood prides itself on being a very walkable community, and I think that it is, but we need to enforce that and encourage that, and make sure that people feel safe when they're out and about walking.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bullock, are you ready, or shall I?
How about I'll go later?
Okay, that's fine.
Thanks.
All right. Councilmember Strebig.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Alexandra. I did have a chance to look at your resume, and it's very impressive. I'm wondering what your experience with inclusion and diversity is, and how do you think your experiences will benefit Lakewood citizens and the city council?
Absolutely. So working in human resources, I was a one-woman show in a manufacturing world. I was both the youngest and oftentimes the only female in the room. I think that led to, one, my confidence in my leadership, but two, being able to really draw inclusive opinions. I've had the opportunity to help several members of organizations be able to come out as either trans or gay in manufacturing workspaces, which I think can be really, really challenging when you're in a male-dominated workspace and you may be transitioning to female. That could be really challenging. So coming up with safe ways for that person to smartly and on their own timeframe come out to be the person that they truly feel that they are, I think, is incredibly important, and I think that can be used in my background with diversity, in including voices both in the city and at city council.
Thank you, that's awesome. And thank you for helping the LGBTQ community thrive there. And can you tell me, what did your company do to help with that process? Did you have any educational opportunities with their employees, or I'm putting words in your mouth?
Yeah, no, no, that's a...
Tell me what your company did to help with that.
That's a great question. So in small to medium-sized businesses, resources are oftentimes not as readily available as you would like for them to be. So I took it upon myself to really seek out, like, helpful, like YouTube videos, so like really free resources that I was able to find independently. I had town halls amongst the company to roll out what does it mean to be trans, what is this person feeling? And that was before, that was a part of our rollout plan, before we even had that person come out to anyone. So it wasn't like a target on this person's head, and they're looking at, oh, well, this person is now trans. It was really just a way to help get the message out, and a part of change management is telling people about the change before it happens, so they can really buy into the change first. So it was basically a one-woman show, trying to figure out what resources would really resound with the most amount of people.
That's good, and I love what you just said, that to tell people about change before it happens, and because we have so much change going on constantly, the education piece is critical. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Marks?
Thanks, Alex, for coming tonight and for having the courage to apply for an appointment to city council. It is very exciting to be a part of local government where you can really make change. So since you've been a lifetime resident of the city of Lakewood, I'm sure you can sing its praise. What do you think is the greatest weakness in Lakewood right now?
I think right now, probably the greatest perceived weakness would be, I don't, some of the, some of the folks that I work with have been applying, or have been trying to find housing. They've been trying to find an affordable house, and I have one colleague in particular that is looking very specifically in Lakewood, and he keeps getting outbid. I think that's a sign of like the housing market just in general, and everyone wants to live in Lakewood, and I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, but it's not, it's not necessarily affordable for everyone to live and buy a home in Lakewood. And I think that's kind of a sign of the times just as they are now, or not back in the 20s when you could buy a house for, you know, pennies on the dollar. But I think the challenge is finding permanent housing for folks that would like to stay in Lakewood, because we'd like to retain our Lakewood citizens as much as possible.
Right, that's so true, and Lakewood always has been known to be a great place for first-time home buyers to move and start a family, and that is precarious in today's world here in Lakewood, which is unfortunate, because I think that changes the fabric of our community if we don't have young families here in the, in the community. That is a very important issue that we all on city council are very considerate of. What do you think you would recommend about that? Do you have any ideas about how we can make housing more affordable?
I think we could do a couple of things. I don't know necessarily how feasible it would be, but I think like rent-to-own scenarios make a lot of sense. Trying to find a way to potentially figure out how to limit the amount of like Zellows that are able to purchase properties for Airbnbs and things of that nature, to see if we could find a way to limit the rental stock that is not local landlords. I think that would be something that I would probably try to focus on first and foremost, but also finding ways to, like doubles are a great option to start and live in. How can we increase young families wanting to have that? Maybe, I know in this particular situation, my colleague really wants to live in a particular area because his son goes to a particular school, so how could we, for young families, make it easier? If parents are willing to drive their child to another school, is there like leeway that we could give for a certain period of time? If they have two more years of elementary school, can they take their child to school and buy a house in a different ward? Is that something that we could look at doing? Really to encourage people to stay in Lakewood and find housing that meets their budget and meets their needs.
Yeah, I hope we can all find a way to make that happen, people. Thank you so much, thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for applying for this position.
Alex member Evans?
Thank you. Hi, Alex, thanks for being here. It's, having just recently sat over there, I understand that it takes a lot to get up here and put yourself out there, so thank you. There's, you had a part in your cover letter about navigating, you know, sometimes challenging situations. Can you just talk a little bit about your approach to that when things, you know, maybe don't go according to plan, or there are differences of opinion that you're trying to, you know, build some consensus on? How do you approach those situations?
Yeah. I feel like everything that I've navigated up to this point in my life has been complex or challenging, but really, I think finding the commonalities between both parties that you're having a conversation with. In this week at work, we have a bottleneck in one of our processes, and in order to identify where that bottleneck stemmed from, we had to go back like three different departments, so really getting every stakeholder at the table to understand what their process is and how we can come to a resolution that makes sense for everyone, while mitigating the risk to ensure that all parties have an equitable solution.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here, nice to meet you, and also I recognize this is probably not a very intimate environment or format for interviews, so thanks for hanging in there and, you know, making it a conversational discussion here. The, you know, I think you, you've got a lot of experience in business and in managing people or working with people, and that's all wonderful, and I think we have a number of candidates who could, who have leadership potential and could serve. City council is a group, team sport, as it were, because we have to work on many issues as a body, or not, and also then partner with, I'm looking at the law director as a stand-in for all of the administration. There's hundreds of people in, in city government to get things done. And then, of course, what you said before, we're talking also to the public, so there's a lot of juggling and navigation. Could you give us a sense of two things? One is, what's your work style? And there's no right or wrong answer.
Sure.
You know, some people do deep dive and research, some people are analytical spreadsheet people, others, you know, might have some different approach, like, like team tasking or something. And then the second part is, I heard you say about active transportation and intersection safety, and also the affordable housing, or, you know, the rising cost of homes in Lakewood. Are there any other issues that you could give us a sense that you'd like to work on, or you've, you think are important that you'd focus on? Thanks.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you, Councilperson Bullock. Work style, I'll tackle that one first. I am a data-driven manager, I am a data-driven person. However, once I have the data, like the Safe Streets of Lakewood compiled just an awesome report that I was able to really dive into, it was like 94 pages of just like excellent data. So being able to really digest that data and then have collaborative conversations, because data means, can be interpreted in so many different ways, and the way that I interpret this data could be totally different from, you know, my neighbor, or you, for instance. So really having that collaborative approach to ensure that we're reaching the desired result with the data that we have available. I think that's my work style. And I did talk a little bit about active transportation. I think I would be remiss if I didn't also talk about Tristan Rader's agenda that he had. He had on there renewable energy, I think that's incredibly important. Affordable housing is something that we both align on. Access to healthcare, as a benefit administrator in my days in human resources, I think having access to healthcare and affordable healthcare is incredibly important. Protecting workers' rights, working in human resources, you are on the side of both the corporation and the employee, so find, you are constantly walking that line of being the intermediary, to be able to find a resolution that works for both the company and the employee. I think that kind of serves. I think city council does that in a lot of ways. You're toeing the line between the administration and then your constituents. So I think I have a lot of experience in that manner and protecting workers' rights. So that, that is, or was, what Tristan Rader had in his agenda, so I'd really love to focus on those to honor the rest of his term as he moves on to Columbus.
Colleagues, any additional questions of things we haven't hit yet that you want to ask, Alex? Okay. So a couple things for me. So as you talked about, this is a one-year appointment. Whether or not you're selected, do you anticipate that you would run for office?
Yeah, so I think I talked a little bit about this earlier. I'm finally at a place in my life where I feel like I can give back to the Lakewood community. If that means running for elected office, I would, I would love to do that, but I think I could also serve on, there are several boards that really interest me, but I think there are ways that I could make an impact on Lakewood in a really positive manner, even if it weren't elected office, but it's not off the table.
Okay, thank you. And that's a good lead into my next question, is are there any boards or commissions, I know as, as you were looking through, that stood out to you, that you thought if, if this isn't, if you aren't appointed, that you would be particularly interested in serving on?
Yeah, the one that really stood out to me that I think fits like my financial background is like the Loan Review Board. It also fits in my schedule, I think that would be something that I'd be really, really interested in.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
No, they say you're supposed to prepare questions, but that wasn't in the format prior to this, so I don't necessarily have that. I do have a little closing statement, if you all don't have any other questions for me.
That's sure, and is there anything, well, this may be in your closing statement, anything else you think that we should know about you? So that may lead into your closing statement, just fine.
No, I think you guys have asked really, really great questions, and it's, it's been quite the honor to be here and to be able to interview here.
Great. If you want to make your closing statement, we're ready here.
Perfect. Council of Clerk, Ms. Fox, you can fact-check me on this, but I was the first person to return the phone call, so I just naturally took the first spot, but I think that leads into what recency bias is. The Cambridge Dictionary defines it as the fact that when you're forming an opinion about something and giving too much attention that have happened recently, humans are prone to recency bias. So please don't forget about me, you have several interviews that are happening. You've chosen five other really intelligent, they have incredible resumes and backgrounds, and I, I, I won't speak for you all, but I hope that we, as Lakewoodites, have the same vision and future plans for Lakewood, and we really want to see Lakewood thrive and flourish, so I'm so happy to have been a part of this interview. You all have a really tough decision ahead of you. Don't forget about me, and I'll leave you with this, listen up Lakewood, we're better with bonnycues.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here, Alex, and thanks for taking that first spot. Somebody has to, and we appreciate your boldness, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Awesome. All right, so we got out with five minutes to spare, so that's good. So Becky, if you're, if you're ready, we can, either, either one, you sit or stand, whatever's more comfortable for you.
Sit as well.
Okay, yeah, and I'll give you a minute to get settled, too, so. And, hi, welcome back. So now, tell me how I pronounce your last name, remind me again?
Macavic.
Macavic, Becky Macavic, okay. And then, did you want to do an opening statement?
No, I'm happy to dive into the conversation.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome, and also thank you for putting yourself out here and being here. We know it's kind of an intimidating process, unfortunately, just the nature of public meeting and wanting to make sure we record it and get everybody out, so, but we try to make it as comfortable as we can, so. So you heard my spiel before, but as a whole, so council members, this would be a one-year appointment for the council member-at-large, which serves all of Lakewood. If, if appointed and you wanted to stay in the seat, you would need to run in November, possibly, actually in a September primary if there were enough candidates as well. And the other part, that council members typically estimate they spend about 20 hours a week on council work, that's not, there's not a required amount, some people spend more, some people spend less. We have Monday night meetings, starting as early as 5:30, going till whenever they need to go to. Knowing all of that, does that fit within your schedule, and do you have the capacity to fulfill that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so that out of the way, my first question is, well, first I'll give you a little opportunity to tell us a little bit about your background, and how you think that that would, would serve us here on council and serve the community.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam President. So I moved to Lakewood about 10 years ago, 2014. It was, once I graduated from college, I was looking at Northeast Ohio, and where do I want to live? And loved the city of Lakewood, and started renting, and I'm still a renter, and I've been in Lakewood for, as a renter, for about the last decade or so. And I really took an interest in government, and my day job is in government affairs for a local museum and nonprofit organization, so hopefully I'd be able to transfer skills from that job into this job, although every entity is different, the goals and the strategic vision of every entity is different, but operationally, there are still similarities, so hopefully I'd be able to translate those skills to this position in Lakewood City Council. I volunteer regionally, both at Playhouse Square as a redcoat, volunteer, so the arts are really important to me, and I also volunteer with the Ohio Arts Council as a grant application reviewer in terms of funding decisions. And then a couple years ago, after the Dobbs decision, when there was a resolution brought before council, I believe it was Resolution 20-2022, I had the opportunity to come to council and speak in support of that resolution, which I was really grateful for.
And then, you talked a little bit about this with your, the Ohio Arts Council and the redcoat. Are there any other ways you'd like to share with us that you are involved in Lakewood community service or organizations, ways that you're engaged in the community currently?
Yeah, absolutely, great question. And so locally, I have teach faith formation with a local community church, but not formally with any of the citizen advisories or formal, formal citizen committees, but I'm a regular participant at Lakewood Alive events, so whether that be the Summer Meltdown, or the Taste of Lakewood, or the Lakewood Arts Festival, regularly participate, and I'm a patron of those events.
Vice President Baker?
Sure. Thank you, Becky. Appreciate you putting yourself out there, and I often think I have one of the cooler day jobs at Cleveland Metropolitan, but the Rock Hall is a really cool place to work, so that must be incredible, and it's great to see you use your, you know, professional experience to help with the Ohio Arts Council, with Playhouse Square. But I'll ask a similar question, because I like to kind of keep the data similar. If appointed, you'll have about 11 or 12 months, try to make a difference in Lakewood. And as you diagnose it as a, as a renter, as a person who lives here, as a person who, you know, sees the community, what do you think our kind of biggest issue is, but an issue that you can tackle in 12 months? So kind of an issue that is able to be accomplished quickly?
Well, Vice President Baker, thank you so much for that question. There, and these are issues that I know council is working on and more than aware of, but public safety, and in particularly, as we look at pedestrian traffic, or pedestrian safety, and motor vehicle safety as well, I think that's something we've heard a great deal of since the tragic accident, unfortunately, at the end of last year. And council being a resource not only to listen to resident, resident voices on that issue, and where do they see those issues, but also being, as we approach budget season, how can we draw to financial resources and other resources to addressing that issue? And the second issue as a renter is, of course, housing. I think as we, and I know some of this relates to things that council has control of, but sometimes the county has control over property valuations and things like that, but continuing as a member of council to be a resource in helping make, making Lakewood a vibrant and affordable place to live for younger renters and families such as myself, but continuing to tackle the housing issue in Lakewood.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebig?
Thank you. Thank you, Becky, for being here, I appreciate it. I did have a chance to look at, at your resume as well, and actually, that was one of my questions about the community organization, so thank you for, for supporting that. That was very important for the community to have a say in locally here about how we use our resources, and that was very important, so thank you for being there for that. I have the same question as I did for the prior candidate. What is your experience with inclusion and diversity, and how do you think your experiences will benefit Lakewood citizens and the city council?
Thank you, Councilwoman, that's an excellent question. So one of the most wonderful things I think about Lakewood in terms of diversity is it's not just a sense of inclusion, but it's a sense of belonging, like true belonging in the community. So hopefully, as a member of council, I would be able to do everything in my effort to continue to uphold that sense of belonging for all members of the community. Personally, through my professional experience, I've participated in REI groundwater training, as well as the multi-day racial equity training as well. And I've also learned that what gets tracked gets measured, in terms of, you know, what gets tracked and measured is successful. And at the Rock Hall, we're undergoing a massive capital project, and as a part of that, we have undertaken tracking for MBE, SVE, FVE, you know, to make sure that we're really using our capital resources to hire minority businesses, female-owned businesses, small businesses, to ensure that work is done and stays local as well. So hopefully, those are all skills that I would be able to translate to council, especially with all the major capital projects that council and the city are undertaking in the upcoming year, including the Bunce Road Project and the Lakewood Development Site Project. the Lakewood Development Site project.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you. Thank you, Becky, for sharing your resume with us and for applying for this position. It is wonderful to serve on council. You really can make a difference in the community. And since you're not a lifelong Lakewood resident, you moved here 10 years ago, where did you grow up?
So I grew up sort of here, there, and everywhere, moved around a great deal, mostly in Northeast Ohio, though. I did do my undergrad in Michigan, although I am an Ohio State fan, just for the record. But came back and then did my master's at Cleveland.
So what do you think, obviously, you know the strengths of Lakewood, and that's why you chose to live here. What do you think are our greatest challenges today?
Yeah, so thank you so much, Councilwoman. That's a great question. I know it goes kind of aligned with Vice President Baker's question as well. But in terms of challenges, and I know the previous candidate mentioned housing, you know, as somebody who's lived in Lakewood for 10 years, has had to do various rental agreements, and seen that rent price increase over the last 10 years, would love to see Lakewood continue to be an affordable place to live, an affordable place for young professionals to come and start their careers and start their life here in Lakewood. And then, I think, also in terms of challenges, we talked about public safety, but then also capital projects. And I know it's a five-year capital plan and budget, but continuing to manage those capital resources effectively, whether it be the stormwater management, Lakewood Hospital Site, Bunce Road project, any number of things. And for council to continue to be a resource for residents through those projects as well, and communicating that information. Thank you. Thank you.
Member Evans?
Thanks, Madam President. Becky, thanks for being here. Yeah, it was great looking over your resume and seeing your experience. As somebody who also has a lot of experience in nonprofit world, I can understand how that can be challenging in some ways. That leads to my question. You're dealing with lots of different people with lots of different perspectives and ideas. What's your approach to kind of wrangling those folks together and trying to build consensus among a great many different kinds of people?
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Yes, as you know, nonprofits, you're trying to kind of keeping frogs in a wheelbarrow. But in terms of building consensus, in sort of the world of foundation and government relations, a lot of my work revolves around grants and grants management. But that also, the other side of that is project execution. So in my role, I don't have any direct reports, which means the full strategy and execution of any grant funds that we receive sort of falls on my shoulders to ensure that they are used and stewarded well. But that also means I have to build buy-in with our internal program officers and program managers, so whether that be our artists and residents programs, or education programs, anything like that, and then external funders as well to show the impact of their support. And for me, the first step of all of that is listening and not coming in with my own agenda of, these are the things I want to do, these are the things I want to accomplish, but genuinely listen to what are the needs, where do we need financial resources, and then going out to external stakeholders and listening to them about, we have the financial resources, but this is how we'd like to see them applied, and then getting everybody at the table, and this is how we can drive an impact, which is sometimes easier said than done. But that's generally where I start, is with a sense of listening.
Councilmember Bullock?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nice to meet you, Becky, or I should say, Ms. McAvick.
McAvick.
McAvick, all right. And I hope we're not being boringly predictable here, you know, in our questions that we have. So I'd like to ask the same thing I asked before, which was, could you share a little bit about your work style and any other issues that are of interest to you that you'd like to prioritize or see advanced as part of our community's government? And then, you know, I'm also interested in your background, especially, you know, your field is similar to mine. I'm in nonprofits as well, more on the government affairs side than the fundraising side, although those things you always have to tend to. So could you give us any feedback or insights from your experience at the Rock Hall, or I should really say, with your organizations, not particularly the Rock Hall, but if you're in this field, is there some feedback that you might have for us on city council about how we can improve, how things might be done differently, or some practices that you've seen be effective in your travels that we could consider as well?
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Those are great questions. So tackling the first one, my sense of work, my work style. I work independently, but then also as a part of the team. It's sort of a two-way approach. So again, going back to my style as a grants manager, that involves a lot of research in terms of looking at history of giving, looking at impact, looking at data from education programs. It involves a great deal of time in research and really understanding those aspects. But then, as previously mentioned, also as a part of a team, building that, creating buy-in, both internally and externally, and really delivering a clear vision for, especially if it's a new program, if it's a new initiative, really being able to articulate that and make sure external stakeholders and internal stakeholders understand that. And then, I think your second question was other issues in focus. I know, and I don't mean to keep repeating the same thing here, but we've talked about housing, and we've talked about public safety. And I think the Bunce Road project is a great example of public safety that's being done to make West 140th and Bunce Road more pedestrian-friendly. It is one of the busiest roads, and that is the focus of those capital dollars. Housing, you know, we've talked about, you know, the affordability and the property values and taxes, but then also, at the state level, I know that would require redoing some of the calculations in terms of how property taxes are done. So it sort of involves city government, county government, and state government as well to come to a solution, and not just for the city of Lakewood, but cities across our region as well. And then, in terms of, I'm so sorry, in terms of additional focus, I think sustainability. Lakewood and generally the Northeast Ohio region is in a really unique spot, especially as we look at climate change. And I know, on a day like today, you know, as we talk about consistent weather patterns, and a day like today might not be the best day to talk about this, but in terms of enduring extreme weather changes and so forth, Lakewood's in a really unique position, particularly with our natural resources like Lake Erie, the green initiatives I know the city has already taken. I know this is a value and an issue that should continue to be sort of at the forefront of projects and discussion. And then, you had a third question, and I apologize. It was lessons learned, Councilwoman, correct me if I was lessons learned, sort of as we look at other government affairs. I think one of the biggest lessons I've learned and seen particularly over the course of the last year is, if you're working with other governmental entities, to be able to know and understand if you need their buy-in, if you need their fiscal support, to be able to voice why that is and what that is. I think working, you know, with such a public eye and with such a public focus, oftentimes, I think, you know, the media can grab whatever it is they're going to grab, and then, you know, it looks like nobody, everybody's, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. So to be able to be clear as you're working with other government entities, work with other citizens in the community, to make sure you're articulating your vision and being clear with your communications is just so incredibly important to avoid any PR craziness.
It's always good advice. Maybe one more follow-up, if I may, Madam Chair. I may embarrass myself with this question, but I'm looking at your volunteer experience. Excellent with the redcoat, volunteer with Playhouse Square. Hope you've seen some good shows there. Community organizing in favor of ordinance 20-2022 in Lakewood City Council. I cannot remember what 20-2022 is, and I'd love to hear more about that, and also how you got involved and why you got involved.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Happy to speak to that. So this was when I lived in Ward Two, so previous council member, Scheffner's district, and he, and I apologize, there were other council members who had signed on to that resolution as well, had brought this resolution before council after the Dobbs decision, and in regards to protecting the welfare of the citizens of Lakewood, and not directing city financial resources to prosecuting women or medical providers should they need an abortion.
Okay, so I remember that, I just didn't remember the number of it. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. And then, I, you know, I had spoken with Councilman Scheffner at our block party event after that, and then I started going around, you know, my neighborhood, knocking on streets, putting talking points in mailboxes, talking with my neighbors, inviting them to come out to council and speak in favor of it, and just sort of a lot of grassroots, boots-on-the-ground kind of organizing.
And your experience with that was great, terrible, somewhere in between?
Eye-opening. Yeah, eye-opening. No, it was eye-opening, but it was also empowering. City government, I think, has a unique position of being the most accessible point of government for anybody. So whether the frustrations that citizens are feeling, particularly in that case on a federal level, this is where they came to voice those concerns and those frustrations, or potentially the support as well. I know there's a strong contingent that came out for that as well. But this is the most accessible place where citizens can make that be heard. So it was equally empowering and eye-opening.
Thank you.
Right. Colleagues, any further questions, anything we've missed that you wanted to ask? So I'll ask Becky, so as we mentioned, this is a one-year appointment. If you were appointed, if you wanted to retain the seat, you would need to run, possibly as early as September, if there's a primary in November. Otherwise, whether or not you're appointed, and there's no right or wrong answer to this question, but whether or not you're appointed, do you intend to run for office?
Yeah, at this point, I would strongly consider it.
Okay. And then, if you are not appointed, are there any boards or commissions that particularly caught your eye, or any other ways you'd like to get involved on the municipal level?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, Madam President. Yeah, I really enjoyed looking and learning about all these ways, which, quite frankly, some of them I didn't even know about. But Lakewood Alive, I think certainly, as we look at the Arts Festival, I think that's one that's very near and dear to my heart, and would love to get involved with on a deeper level. But secondly, on the community, I was really struck by the Lakewood neighbors who would go through and help with various home repairs, or different requests, or things like that. Having had the opportunity to do various mission trips, I think that's something I would love to get involved in as well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Okay, that's all right. There's not a right or wrong with that either. And then, is there anything else that you would like us to know about you, or anything you'd like to tell us about yourself, any sort of closing thoughts?
Nothing additional on my hand, except just thank you. It was really an honor to be here and be selected for an interview and have the opportunity to have this conversation with all of you. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. And then, Nicole? Now, we're a little ahead of schedule, so if you need a minute, you can take it, but if you want to, all right, if you want to just get it over with, you can come on up. And you're welcome. If you prefer to stand, you can stand, or if you'd like to sit, you can sit. Okay, great. And can't see if the mic's still on.
Yeah.
Yep, good. All right.
It definitely is.
Welcome. I'll let you get settled for a second there. But you've heard, you've had the opportunity to see, so you know the spiel. Now, we did have, gave folks the opportunity, if you wanted to do a two-minute opening statement, is that something you'd like to do?
I would.
Okay.
It may not be two minutes.
Okay, that's all right. That's all right.
No, so I wanted to thank you for this opportunity, a privilege. A little bit about myself, I am a nearly lifelong Lakewood resident. I graduated from Lakewood High School, as do my siblings. I've graduated a student already. I have a junior at the high school, and I have a fourth grader at Lincoln. So very well embedded in the community. It's great to live in a place where you have a lot of like-minded people. You know, we have so many things that go on, and so many opportunities and activities that residents, you know, in other communities don't really get to experience. So we're very fortunate, and you know, it's something that I've always loved and wanted to be a part of. There were so many years in my professional career that I was on the road, so these were things that I was not able to do until probably about a year and a half to two years ago. So being able to consistently be in the community and go to, you know, so many of these events has just really shaped me and made my experience here better.
Thank you. Okay, so you've heard me say this, but just in the interest of fairness, I'll give my same spiel to everybody. So the appointment is a one-year appointment. If you were appointed and you wanted to keep the seat, you would run potentially as early as September, in a primary in November, to keep the seat. Councilmembers estimate that they work about 20 hours a week. That's Monday nights, starting as early as 5:30, going till whenever. And then, that doesn't include political activities, or campaigning, or community engagement. So with all that being said, do you feel like you have the capacity to manage that workload and that the schedule will work with yours?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's see, that out of the way. So you shared a little bit about your background, which is helpful. Can you tell us a little bit more about any of your background and how you think that would specifically contribute to council as a body and in service to the community?
Yeah, so I've worked approximately 20 years in contract management services. So I, you know, work on, I work for a corporation, but we work with a client. So I've worked in healthcare, working with various, you know, healthcare systems across the country. Currently, I'm working with the Cleveland Clinic. So I have a lot of background in contract management. I'm currently our Assistant Finance Director, so budgeting, planning, capital investments. I manage our community fund. I have a lot of background in, you know, lean processes and process improvement in my prior role. So just a lot of, you know, working with teams and collaboration and driving best outcomes.
Thank you. And you tell us a little bit about if you have any, you talked about with your kids being in the schools, but are there ways that you're currently engaged with community organizations here in Lakewood, in the region, or volunteering, or other ways that you're engaged and invested in the community?
Yeah, so, you know, my children play sports. So, you know, you do the boosters, and you're, you know, in the Lakewood football, just started like a Ranger Football Club, or whatever that is, you know. So a lot of times, within Lakewood, I would say I've been a lot more of a financial donor than active, other than boosters, working, you know, the concession stands and stuff. And then professionally, just with the corporations that I've worked in, they're multinational corporations. We have very big initiatives, you know, for community engagement and activism. So I work with our, we have a food pharmacy fund where we have donated an amount of money, and we work with the hospitals to have these pantries for the community. The one that we've opened within the last year is at South Point Hospital. So it's, you know, it services the community. We donate money to the food bank. Another thing that I've done and that we do is, we do neighbors helping neighbors. So we go into the neighborhood near the hospitals, and we take an entire day where we do yard work for the elderly population that's in those neighborhoods. We have, you know, different days where it's like ABC Day, and so we, it's all about, you know, community engagement and giving back. And so I think a lot of my, you know, community involvement has been more within my professional life.
Thank you.
Yeah. Vice President Baker?
Sure. Thank you, Nicole. And full disclosure, I went to high school with Nicole and know her brother. And your daughter was a great basketball player, and your son, I saw him play football this year, so, you know, athlete, you were an athlete as well. So it's good to know the next generation is doing the same. And I knocked on her door when I ran for council, so I interrupted her watching TV. So I'm thankful she didn't shoo me away. So thank you for putting yourself out there. It's not easy. And then, thank you for willing to donate, you know, your time and put your hat in the ring. But I'll ask you the same question I ask everyone else, because I'm also curious as to what kind of what people think a problem is, but a problem that can be resolved in 11 or 12 months, which is what this position will give you before you have to run again. So if you could think about, is there an issue that's facing the city that you think is, a solution could be accomplished, or at least make great strides on in the next 11 or 12 months?
Yeah, I know it's going to sound cliche, but it really is like the, I think the public safety one is probably the one that you can tackle the quickest, because it is a lot of, you know, making sure that our crosswalks are safe, making sure that we have, you know, gosh, even with the weather events, you know, making sure that we gosh, even with the weather events, you know, making sure that we have some sort of resources where we're, you know, shoveling the driveways. The schools this week, or today, you know, a lot of those pathways weren't shoveled. So I think a lot of it is, is, you know, making sure that especially the younger children, and even, you know, the driving age population, because it's, you know, I have a 17-year-old. You know, it's all that public safety, and making sure that our streets are safer, so that, you know, they can be traveled, and people can get from A to B safely. It's so cliche, but within, you know, one year, I think that that's probably the one that is probably the easiest to tackle.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. Sorry, I was taking notes. Thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your resume. It's very impressive. And I'm also, I was a little excited to see that you started in the hospital in food service.
I did.
And you are continuing in that line.
Yeah, yeah.
Some, just a couple of years later.
Just a couple. Yeah, it was, I started at Lakewood Hospital. You know, I was working in college, and it sounds funny, but it, my grandmother was a patient there, and she was, you know, not well at the time, and it just, when you have a family member who's a patient, and you're working there, you really just see the amount of support that our patients need, and how the hospitalists have come together to get them the best outcomes. So it just became something that I became passionate about, through, you know, watching my grandmother go through it.
I love that. Thank you. And my question is the same question. What is your experience with inclusion and diversity, and how do you think your experiences will benefit Lakewood citizens in the city council?
Yeah, so I actually, as a mother of an LGBTQ daughter, you know, it's something that I'm very passionate about. She is also biracial, so that's another, you know, point of, you know, I'm always, I hate to say it, it's like that heightened awareness, because, you know, she's biracial, and you always worry, and you're, you know, you're doing the education with your children, like, you know, you listen to every, you know, instruction that's given to you if you get pulled over, and she's got a temper, so I'm like, you know, you need to keep that down. So, you know, there's that, just as a parent, and a heightened awareness. And then professionally, I'm a member of, you know, different employee resource groups that we have. So we have one for, you know, LGBTQ, we have, it's mostly like the pride ones that I'm a member of, but I've, both corporations that I've worked for in the last 10 years, it's, it is a very big focal point, and it's a big, we have very large groups, so we're very active within that. And then I'm a member of, like our women's community there too. When I was working in DC, I was a member of our, you know, hub there, so it's just been something, it's great, like for networking, for, with women, and within our corporations.
Are those groups that you're a member of, are those support groups that you use on a regular basis?
Yeah, you know, you talk to people who are in, you know, similar situations, and, you know, you end up, it ends up being a support group. It's not, you know, structured to be that way, you know, but you have open dialogue with people, and you find out that you've been in similar situations, and, you know, you're able to be a support for them, you're able to talk through things. How did you handle this? You know, this is how I handled that, this is what, you know, I've done with, in, you know, my children, and teaching my children, or whatnot. So it does become a support group, even though it's, you know, it's meant to be more of like a networking, but yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
Thanks, Nicole, for coming out tonight, and for submitting your resume for consideration. Appreciate that. And you are a Lakewood resident, lifelong resident.
Yeah.
Good for you. So tell me, as I asked the other candidates, we all know the strengths of Lakewood, that's why we all live here. What do you see is the biggest challenge today that you feel that you could make a difference with in city council?
So it, I, there's, it's actually two totally different, but the same. So it is, it's housing, it's affordable housing, and it is, you know, young families being able to come into the community, and be able to, you know, find a home for themselves, and grow their family. But I also see it from, you know, the perspective of our aging population. The street that I live on, you know, I've seen a lot of my neighbors age in their homes, and then they get to a certain age, and they have to leave their homes, because, you know, Lakewood homes, we have a lot of stairs, you know, they're old. And so I've seen a lot of that, I saw it with my parents, and we don't have like a great structure for that aging population, for that next step, for that next place for them to live and stay within the community. So a lot of times, we do lose, you know, the older population to another city, because there isn't anything for them here. Their house no longer fits them, but there isn't something here for them. You know, I saw, I watched my parents do it, they had to, they sold their house, you know, couldn't do the stairs anymore, and they had to move to Rocky River, because, you know, the amenities that they were looking for within, you know, an apartment, because they didn't want to buy a house, they didn't want to pay the HOA, or condo, they didn't want to pay the HOA and everything. So when they, you know, were looking for places to live, Lakewood didn't actually fit what they, their needs were, and what they were looking for. So they live in Rocky River, which my mother hates, because that is not where she wanted to live. So it's just, you know, so I see both ends of that, where it's, you know, you have the younger population, but we definitely, you know, with the older population, I think, you know, especially given, you know, building approvals and whatnot, you know, I would love to see more projects that, you know, give our residents another option once they've aged out of their homes.
I agree, certainly. As our population ages, they become, it's like the most vulnerable time in their life, and they have to move out of their home, which they've lived in a long time, and they love, and they have to relocate. You know, I wish we could have, somebody could, maybe we could have a magic wand, and you could just like poof, make all those homes with all those stairs convert into ranches, you know, wouldn't it be great?
Right.
But I do think that is a problem that all of us see, and we'd love to see changes occur on that front. Thanks for participating tonight, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Evans.
Thanks, Madam President. Hi, Nicole, thanks for being here. I, like Councilmember Strebig, I was fascinated to see your first job out of high school. Somewherely do, position in the same type of work so many years later, so that's really cool. I was drawn to this one part of your resume, looking at being part of a task group to develop best practices. That can be pretty challenging work, because it's usually amongst people from different types of organizations. What's your strategy for getting, you know, building consensus among folks like that who are looking at things from sometimes totally different sides of the equation?
Yeah, so it's a lot of collaboration. You know, I, I love research, I love, I'm data-driven, you know, especially in my finance job right now. So it's, you know, making sure that I bring to the table the best knowledge that I can, and, you know, working with other people, and, you know, my answer might be wrong, it's, you know, listening, and working within groups, and developing what is the best solution, you know, because it's not black and white typically. There are so many answers to one problem, so it's really, you know, taking everyone's strengths, and coming together, and finding the best solution, is the way that I've been able to get the best outcomes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bullock.
Okay, I'm up to bat. Nicole, nice to meet you. I bet you can't predict what I'm going to ask, which is the same as before, although I do have a couple others. So first, can you share your work style? We've got a little bit of a sense of that from your experience that you've described, which is ample. You know, once again, I mean, up here, I'm always struck by, we've got the luxury in Lakewood of so many talented, very experienced, very thoughtful, and accomplished people applying, and I think what we really should do is enlarge in council to 15, so that we could, you know, appoint more. But at any rate, I appreciate your, you know, understanding the lean experience, which at one time Lakewood had, as a process to improve performance, and make sure that there was kind of listening by management, and collecting insight. So anyway, could you tell us, within that context, about your work style? Again, no right or wrong answer, just to get a feel for what kind of colleague we might have in you. And then secondly, any of the issues, in addition to the ones already mentioned, that strike you, you know, motivate you to make the application in the first place?
Yeah, so to talk about my work style, very much, you know, I love to do research, I like to read, I like to make sure that I have, you know, I have knowledge, I like to check different sources, so that, you know, I have a fully developed thought, instead of just, you know, coming with the first thing that I saw. And working together, and listening, and, you know, you have two ears and one mouth, so you should listen twice as much as you speak, which is not this forum. So, you know, just making sure that, you know, everybody's thoughts are given, and that you've, you know, made considerations there, and that we've taken all of the options, and found the best resolution, whether it's, you know, A, B, C, or a combination. That's always been my approach, especially within my work. You know, when we are doing lean processes, I always like to go to the people that actually do the job, and say, you know, what makes sense for you? I can come in, and I can look at something and say, you know, maybe that doesn't work, maybe that doesn't work, but what does work, and why does it work? Why do you do something the way that you do it? Because you're the one doing the job, right? Not me. So that's just always been my approach. It's, you know, making sure that I'm not missing something. And then the second part, I'm sorry.
Just, you know, I guess any additional issues that we haven't already touched on, and maybe also shed some light, why now apply for council this year as opposed to previously or next year, you know?
Yeah.
Because you've been a longtime member of the community.
Yeah, I have. So, you know, previously, I traveled for work, I was, I spent more than half the year in a Marriott hotel for work across the country, so it really wasn't something that was feasible with my schedule previously, on top of also being a parent, so, you know, as I've been able to work locally and be home, you know, it frees up some time. Also frees up some time when my oldest has graduated, so, you know, I'm down to, you know, two kids that I'm managing as opposed to three, so that definitely has helped. And then, you know, I have family that I've canvassed for, and worked, you know, passed out literature, and gone to their events, and just recently, I worked the polls, I was standing outside handing out flyers, you know, and it's one of those things that was very inspiring, because, you know, you've got so many people, and, you know, it's probably just Lakewood, you have so many like-minded people, and there was just a lot of like really good energy, and, you know, it just made me actually want to do more, you know, it's the Michelle Obama, do something. So it really kind of resonated, and when I saw the opportunity, I was like, why not now?
Sorry, thank you very much, it's helpful, illuminating answer, and I was going to ask as a follow-up, just, and this has nothing to do with, I'm just curious, your cousin, who was a candidate or an elected official?
So there's two, Michelle Sheehan and Brendan Sheehan, they're judges, one's a Common Police Judge for Cuyahoga County, and one is a Court of Appeals Judge for Cuyahoga County.
Sure. They've been in Lakewood many times, so good to know. And you, I think you already answered my question, so, well, first, as a busy dad with kids and sports, I think it's perfectly acceptable to donate money when you don't have time, so I relate to that comment. And the interaction with the public is great, terrible, somewhere in between, how would you describe it? I guess you may have already partly addressed that.
Yeah, no, I mean, good. Like I said, I was, you know, positive experience, we've got a lot of great people here. I, you know, I stood at the church that I actually vote at, so, you know, I saw a lot of my neighbors, but then I saw other people that, you know, I didn't know, and it's just a friendly, welcoming community, you know. In my work, I've told people about Lakewood, and the activities that we do, and like, they joke around, they're like, oh, it's like a Hallmark town, and I'm like, well, for these events, sure, like, yeah, but, you know, it's, we're privileged, we really are, especially traveling to some rough places.
Thank you very much.
Right. Colleagues, any follow-up further? Vice President Baker.
This is one more $2,000 grant from Lakewood Too Much. You have the mayor, Andy Senkovich, and you have Tescaati, so it's four, Too Much? I'm just kidding.
I don't know, that's not my decision.
All right. So you've heard me say all these things before, but, so there's not a right or wrong answer, but as you know, this appointment would just be for the year. If you were appointed and you wanted to keep the seat, you could be having to run as early as September, in a primary, and then November for the general. So whether or not you are appointed, do you see yourself pursuing elected office?
Yes.
Okay. And if you are not appointed, were there any boards or commissions, or other ways that you would like to see find yourself involved in the municipal government?
Yeah, I love like the things that Lakewood Alive does, so that would definitely be something.
All right. And then is there anything, oh, do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay. And is there anything that you would like to make sure that we know about you, or any closing remarks, or any thoughts you'd like to share?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for their time, I appreciate it, appreciate the opportunity.
Well, we appreciate you being here. This is going to be a tough decision already so far, we've had some great interviews tonight, so we appreciate you putting yourself forward, I know it's not easy to do it, so. Actually, I started as an appointee, so I've been there, several of us have, actually have all been in your seat before, so we're sympathetic, so we appreciate everyone for putting themselves out there, and bearing with us through this little bit clunky process, but we do the best we can. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So just as all the candidates have received this information, but for any members of the public, we do have more interviews coming up next Monday, January 13th, for the remaining three candidates. That evening, council will discuss, the candidates will likely reach a decision that evening, and then the successful candidate would be officially appointed the following Monday, Tuesday, because it's after Martin Luther King Day, the 21st. So that is our upcoming process, and we thank you all again for applied, and we will see you back here next Monday. We also have full council starting in 13 minutes, so we got a little bit of a break. And we've no further business before council. Without objection, we are adjourned.
Yeah.
Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker?
Here.
Block?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Keppel?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Striebig?
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held December 16th, 2024.
We have to approve without the necessity of a reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item one, report from Committee of the Whole held today, January 6th, 2025.
Colleagues, we met tonight for Committee of the Whole to interview the first of three candidates for the open at-large seat, Alexandra Bonikus, Becky Makovic, and Nicole Greenfield. Council members asked each candidate's similar questions to understand their interest and abilities in serving the position. We had some great interviews and we'll continue the process next Monday, January 13th, with the remaining three candidates. We had some great interviews, and we'll continue the process next Monday, January thirteenth, with the remaining three candidates. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item two, ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance to amend section eleven oh five oh two of the zoning code of the codified ordinances by changing and revising the zoning map of the city with respect to certain property as set forth and described as Donald and Thero Development Project from R two to Plan Development.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? This is already referred to Committee and scheduled for January twenty-first. All right, motions were made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item three, communication from Councilmember Bullock regarding public posting of question-and-answer document from two thousand and twenty-five budget hearings.
Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. Dear colleagues, during our recently concluded City Council hearings on the two thousand and twenty-five budget for the City of Lakewood, we discussed many questions live during our hearings with the administration, and they were very illuminating, questions and answers. But we also agreed that given time constraints, the full list of questions couldn't be asked live in the hearings, and so we agreed upon posing and answering questions in written form to be compiled and shared into a document that could be viewed by both City Council and the administration. That document is now largely complete, and to ensure that the useful information it contains is easily accessible to the public, I've attached it to this communication. I'd like to express my thanks to both councilmembers who thoughtfully prepared and posed questions to the administration and to the administration for providing the answers, which involved some work during a busy season, so thank you Director Mahoney. Thank you, council colleagues. The questions listed are not any one of ours alone, but all of ours collectively. This method and format has allowed for additional in-depth deliberation on an extended set of budgetary questions, which I think is a good practice. Sincerely, move to receive and file that communication.
Second, that, motions were made and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Marx.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to commend Councilman Bullock on putting this all together. It was fabulous, so thank you very much. It really made a lot of sense to me. I really appreciate it. It took a lot of time on your part, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to echo Councilwoman Marx's thank yous. A lot of excellent information, and also thank you to the administration for your quick responses and all the, and all the work that you did on the budgets. And I'm very much looking forward to seeing an updated website where this information can be easily found by everyone in our community, because these are questions that everybody should be asking, and everybody should have instant answers to. Thank you.
Your colleagues?
I'll just echo Councilman Bullock stepping into the role of Finance Chair, kind of had to quickly step in and let us through this process and working with the administration. I thought this was a good collaborative process. We had an extremely full docket the last couple of months in working together to get through this process in a timely manner and get this information out, so I thought that was excellent, and I appreciate everyone's work on that in making this information available, so, well done.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to receive and file. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four, November two thousand and twenty-four, Finance Department vendor report submitted pursuant to liquid codified ordinance one eleven oh three.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item five, liquor permit for Bunce Brothers, one seven one one four Detroit Avenue.
Director Vargo, I'm seeing a shaking of the head.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll request deferral of that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. In record time, we are to public comment, so, great job being here right on time for the meeting. So we'll, what list? For a public comment, most of you know the drill. You come up to the microphone, you can, are willing to state your address, name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes, and first up is Mr. Sakum. Welcome back.
Hello. I hope everybody had a good holiday and a good start to the, the new year. And I think I've been coming to these meetings for about three months now. Don't think I've really accomplished anything other than talking to myself. But if my wife were here, she would tell you that I'm pretty stubborn. I tend to get fixated. So I'm not, I'm not going away, nor is the financial, are the financial problems that many homeowners in Lakewood are, are facing. With the downtown development going through and many other developments going through, I think the administration and City Council needs to take a step back and think what all those dollars are going to be used for. Can some of those go back to the average citizens of the, of the city? Frankly, I was dismayed to hear proposals to spend ten million dollars to renovate City Hall. You know, my working career, I've worked at a number of spaces, spaces. I've never found the need for anything fancy. I currently work out of my truck or my living room couch, and it works just fine. And as far as the, the beach goes, I would make a, a similar comment. Taxpayers should not be an endless piggy bank. And for the administration that wouldn't, isn't interested in affordable housing, I would like to point out that the property taxes that are collected through city charter, none of those are subject to nine-twenty reductions. So for every dollar in value, a house goes up. That comes straight out of taxpayers' pocketbooks with no reductions whatsoever. So to me, that's not part of affordable housing. So I would encourage the city to take a step back and to think where it really wants to go. And whether this is going to be a city of expensive apartments or it'll be a city where, you know, an average person can continue to, to live. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up, Mr. Organ. Welcome back.
Howdy. I think we all know where I live at this point. Um, you know, I hope that everybody had a great holiday. Mine was generally pretty good. Had some drinks, hung out with some family members, you know. Got some, got some cool gifts, things like that. Watched a lot of football. But Bill Sappos's family didn't have a great holiday. Our friend Dan, who's not here tonight, was hit by a car in the bike lane, and somehow insurance assessed him half the fault. So I'm really confused by that, and, you know, I know that you all don't have control over the insurance aspect of it, but just at the, the intersection that we've all been discussing for a month or so, just right in that area, there have been three crashes in the last three weeks, four weeks. It, it's pretty atrocious that nothing has been done at all. Like, we, we know these, these fixes. We know how to do them. They're low cost. You could buy rubber curbs and flex posts on Amazon. So in terms of the, the cost, it's a drop in the bucket for the city budget. I don't, I don't know how we're putting a price tag on people's safety. You know, it's, it's kind of crazy to me that I have to keep coming up here and saying this type of stuff. But, you know, I, I applaud Councilwoman Marx for meeting with us yesterday. Was that yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. We, we talked a lot about simple, quick solutions that could be done, and I, I sent out a, a document to, to all of you with some, some pictures. In case you haven't seen it, it's, it's really easy, really cheap. Like, pay me to do it, and I'll, I'll do it. I'll put it in. I don't care. But, you know, to, to echo the, the comment that was just made, like, making it easier for people to get around without the use of a car helps tremendously in terms of cost of living. It, it increases tax revenue for businesses, because more people want to come here and spend money, and they don't have to drive out of town to go to a big box store or something like that, so. There's, there are too many reasons to do this and, and zero reasons to not fix our streets now, make them safe for all users. I don't, I don't know how many times I'm going to have to keep coming up and say this. Hopefully, not too many more. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Ryan Reem.
Hi, Ryan Reem, fourteen oh nine Marlowe Avenue, number four. I would also like to talk about Hilliard and Madison, specifically the bike lane and the road right in front of the Grace Presbyterian Church. When you're heading southwest, and this is a, a drive I do frequently, I'm heading southwest and I'm taking a right onto Madison, headed towards like Pets General, that type of area. There's signage, and there's, I believe there's been three different signs indicating that it's one lane that you go straight or you take a right. And then there's a bike lane to the right of that. It's just gotten so silly. You know, I'll be sitting in the lane, I'm following the sign, I have my turn signal on, and then cars start queuing in that bike lane. So now I'm trying to take a right into a single lane on, on Madison, and I have to deal with one, two, three, four cars, depending on the traffic. And it's so simple. If we put bullards there, if we put flex posts, concrete, we could put Kyle Baker with the, the airplane, you know, the, the ground control sticks with Christmas lights on. I mean, we just need to separate that and prevent cars from going into there, because that's the same reason, in, in a different spot, but that's why Dan got hit, is someone's using this bike lane to get to the turning lane. And it is so simple. It's affordable. It's easy. It's just, I need, every time I go through that intersection, my blood pressure shoots up, because it's such a simple fix, and it creates such a problem without that separation. On top of that, I'd love to see, LPI is there, leading pedestrian?
Indicators.
Indicators. To let pedestrians get out in the street before that green light goes, so they're a little more visible. And then on top of that, I would love to see Hilliard and Franklin taken down to a thirty. Because if we're going to have that bike lane, and the science is there, an accident at thirty miles per hour is a lot different than versus thirty-five. If we're going to have that huge stretch of unprotected bike lane, I'd rather it be a lower speed limit. And like I said, the data's there to show that thirty is a lot safer than thirty-five, so I beg of you, I please, to have some separation on those bike lanes, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Josh Matur.
Hey, good evening. Josh Matur, fifteen twenty Cohasset Avenue. Echo everything that our previous two speakers have said, and I could talk about a lot of different requests and, and things like that, so I'm going to keep mine kind of short and simple, but I sent out an email two weeks ago to everybody on council, the mayor, Planning Department. To date, I have only received responses from Kyle and Tom. We, as an organization, have done a lot of research on different ways to make our city safer, to make streets safer. We've signed up for numerous programs to learn about these things. We've taken it upon ourselves to spend our own money to do these things, like, we have a lot of vested interest and a lot of time invested in this. And, you know, we don't get paid to do this stuff. So we would like to work collaboratively, collaboratively with whoever is interested in helping to make our city a safe place to be. Another gentleman said earlier, we have to decide as a city, what kind of city do we want to be? I don't know if that means that we need to have some sort of additional committee or add it to a, a specific committee that, that currently exists to have some sort of bike and pedestrian advisory situation or something like that, but it's clear that at times like this, we need immediate action. It needs to be something that can happen quickly, can happen cheaply, as has been mentioned before. There's precedent in numerous cities throughout the country. If you read through the email and the attachments and the link that I put in there, there's a crash analysis studio that we're in the process of exploring right now with Strong Towns, which is a nationwide nonprofit organization who runs these studios. They run one-hour studios where they look at a particular intersection and analyze the different reasons that a particular crash happened. They don't assign blame based on like, who did something wrong? Was it the driver's fault? Was it the pedestrian's fault? Things like that. They purely look at the circumstances that allowed that crash to happen. You know, is it speed? Is it the width of the lane? Is it the pedestrian crosswalk is, you know, the timing is not right? Is, you know, numerous different things. They bring in experts, including those from Tool Design, who designed our active transportation plan last year. So they have experts from Tool that, that come in and help with these things. We really would like to have the city involved in some way in this. Having some commitment from the city would be really nice, that, you know, saying, hey, look, we're interested. We do really want to be, to, you know, participate in these things. So we're going to continue to go forward doing it, with or without anyone involved in the city. We're collecting data now. Like I said, we're meeting with them later this week to talk about what to do with it. And we'll extend the invitation when that comes, but we need participation on your part if you're interested. If not, we will end up publishing it on our own, and, you know, our actions will speak for us, so. Anyways, if anybody is interested in, in working with us on it, between both the crash analysis studio and long-term in some sort of committee or something, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just comment real quickly that I truly do appreciate your continued activism deeply. So we appreciate you being here, all that you're contributing, and I'm certainly interested in talking with you more about that study. So we'll keep the conversation going, and it is definitely, these are areas that Vice President Baker and I are currently working on with the administration. I think we're making some progress. So we, we will continue to be working together on that, and hopefully we'll see some progress on that soon, so. It is, it is noted, and we are listening and working, so, just so you are aware.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks to the Lakewood neighbors who are here once again, and Mr. Sakum, who's also here once again on, on two really central issues that are with us. So you're inviting us to take a second look and do better, and I think that's entirely legitimate, both for affordable housing, for helping landlords who are working hard to make ends meet, and provide a fair price and a quality, quality unit to their, to their tenants, and then to keep Lakewood safe for, for every, all road users. You know, so a cou- couple of quick points. I want to clarify, so we had some dialogue at the last December meeting about some of these issues. I made the comment that the budget wasn't as strong as it could be or needed to be, from my opinion. Want to acknowledge what the mayor said at the time, that the Bunce Road proposed project has a significant amount of traffic safety measures as part of that project. And, you know, I got some feedback that maybe that wasn't as, as clearly acknowledged by me as it ought to be, so want to correct the record there and acknowledge that, that important arterial in our community does have quite a lot of ambitious plans included. And I also hope that we will work together to do the things we're talking about with, with the citizens here tonight, which is to move on a annual basis, on a quick, timely basis for things that, that arise more rapidly than the once every so many years cycle for repaving and redoing a road design with the county and with the State Department of Transportation. Some, some of those large projects like Bunce, Warren, Hilliard, Madison, they, they're major, you know, Clifton Boulevard, I know we're, we're partnering with the county effectively where it goes to the bridge to our neighboring community of Rocket River. There's important improvements there, but those things come once every ten or twenty years. It's a both and, so we need to do both, and I think we're improving what we do on the one hand, and I think the feedback we're getting is that we also need to move more nimbly on an annual basis. And so, so I intend to follow through on some of the dialogue we had in the, in the budget to propose some funding this year for less, you know, for, for things that aren't concrete, things that can be done quickly and removed or changed or adjusted quickly. And, and the contents of that are the things that everybody's been discussing, the citizens, some people in Public Works, my colleagues. So, you know, I guess my question for the administration is, do we have a clear sense that there is work that we can and will do in the, on a timely basis this year? Or is that a question that's still under examination, and we don't necessarily have a commitment? a commitment? You know, and I ask now because we've got both chiefs here who are involved in public safety. We don't have Public Works here tonight, but we do have the mayor's office represented, so is there, is there any thoughts that can be shared now on that point?
Councilman, through Madam President, the succinct answer is yes, and it's part of our budget, it's part of what collectively the public safety chiefs, the planning director, myself, the law director, the whole team touches this regularly. So to answer your question, the answer is yes. If, if you want to, to go into specifics, I mean, our budget speaks for itself, is what I'd say, as it relates to what we've tried to implement on a project basis, whether macro or micro. In our meetings last year with the leadership of council, we met many times over the course of many months to try to implement things in a, in incremental basis and a large basis. The active transportation plan is a plan that is a generational thing, and we want to tackle that thing as best we can, as soon as we can. We also live within the limitations of budgets, but that said, we know how important things like public safety are. So I, my, my answer to you in short is yes, and we know how important this is.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we've reached the end of public comment. Do we have any announcements from council members? Announcements from the administration? And I'll just acknowledge that we have several members of the administration out ill today, and we wish them well and, and a quick speedy recovery, so just wanted to acknowledge that they're not playing hooky. All right, any announcements from the administration? No? All right. Hearing none, then we have no further business becoming for council. Without objection, we are adjourned.